Before we get into the, we'll just switch him on.
Okay. I'd like to call the Thursday, September 16th Board of Education meeting to order at 7:02. Mary, can we have a roll call vote?
Sure. You mean roll call?
Roll call, no vote.
Oh, I'm not. Roll call, sorry.
Chairman Papaholtz, sir?
Yeah, I'm here.
Vice Chair Nanak?
Here.
Secretary Siena?
Here.
Janne Bolsono?
Here.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Here.
Vincent Mace?
Here.
Cynthia Hart.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where oceans stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors? Comments? It's so nice to actually see people here. Okay, moving on. Student representatives?
I'm gonna take it away because I'm so-
You're not a student representative.
I feel like a kid right now. I don't look like one, but I feel like one. As you know, it's been over a year since we've had our student reps when we ended the school year in March and then obviously last year we didn't have reps on the board. So we are thrilled to have two members of our senior class here representing, I think, what's excellent in the North Branford school system. I'm gonna quickly just read over their bios because I think it's important. We're gonna talk later about the vision of what the graduate looks like and I think these two embody what we look to instill in our students and they represent excellence. So that being said, I'm gonna start with Brayden LeBeau. Brayden is an accomplished and involved senior at the high school. She's currently taking several challenging advanced placement courses including AP Calculus, AP Biology, AP Spanish, Yukon English and Writing. She's a member of the National Honor Society, Vice President of the Spanish National Honor Society. She's very involved with many different leadership activities. She's a three-sport athlete and a captain of all three sports. Clubs that she's involved with, Global Diversity Club, the GSA Environmental Club, Sign Language Club and Kaleidoscope. She volunteers a great deal in the community and she's a model student at the high school and carries herself with a quiet and assured confidence throughout the community, both on and off the campus. So that's the write-up from the building administration and I echo everything that was said about Brayden. So Brayden, we're so happy you're here and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, McKenna Stone. McKenna is an accomplished and involved senior at the high school as well. She's currently taking several challenging courses, AP Calculus, Physics, Honors, Spanish Five Honors, Yukon Seminar in Writing, member of the National Honor Society, Executive Officer for the High School Student Council. She's a member of the National Honor Spanish Society as well as a senior leader, captain of a volleyball team, captain of our fencing team. Notice that captain, 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 a lot about their leadership. She's a member of several organizations including the Drama Club, Kaleidoscope and the Pep Man. Outside of school, McKenna is the squad leader for the USC Cadets, a youth leadership program affiliated with the US Coast Guard and US Navy. She trains in New Haven approximately twice a month for this program. She's again, model citizen, as her principal says, is known for her upbeat attitude and appreciation for traditions and history associated with the high school and the town of North Branford. So we welcome both of you. We're honored to have them here and we look forward to your input as we talk about many educational issues. So that being said, we have a very small thank you for your time and energy that you're gonna be putting in.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And this is our way of saying. All right, no pressure now, you're gonna have to make your reports in a minute, so.
Do they have reports for us today?
Do you have reports?
Yes, we do.
Oh, great.
I didn't put them on the spot because if they didn't have their reports, then I would be-
The first thing we have is freshman orientation took place on August 26th for our incoming ninth grade students and their parents. Students were provided with an overview of MBHS and programming options, coursework, flex time and protocols associated with the school attendance, school policies and scheduling. The annual MBHS College Planning Night was held on September 14th and was hosted by the MBHS Guidance Department. Information and support was provided to seniors and their family, including material about the college application process and financial aid aspects of that process. MBHS Curriculum Night in Open House will be held this fall in a virtual manner. Faculty will be providing parents with information regarding their courses and curricula via a presentation that can be accessed on the scheduled night of release or anytime after. Parents and staff provided very positive feedback last year when this approach was implemented. And during the onset of the school year and each Friday for the entire year, students are scheduled for advisory which now takes place during flex time. Flex time incorporates an academic study hall, a lunch wave segment and advisory on Fridays. Advisory agendas include information about the school day and programming, a news video program about the school news produced by MBHS students approximately twice a month, capstone support sessions and material, and social and emotional learning which is connected to the MBHS Vision of the Graduate and PBIS Framework acronym, SOAR, S Socially Responsible Contributor, O Open-Minded Engaged Citizen, A Achieved Focused Student, R Resilient Lifelong Learner. The acronym and corresponding rubrics provide a common overlay for academic and social expectations and performance. And lastly, we have, that we are happy to announce, per the CIEC regulations and rules, high school athletics has commenced with all fall sports underway at MBHS. Several teams have participated in workouts and conditionings since the close of school in August and scrimmages are underway. All sports will include a regular season and postseason play when qualifying. This is subject to change based on DPH and CIEC. The volleyball team is currently 2-2. The field hockey team is currently 2-1. And the girls soccer, boys soccer and football teams are all looking for their first wins.
Nice.
Thank you.
Did a great job. So ladies, I'm gonna give you a few options. You have the option to go, because reading your resume, you have quite a-
About a busy schedule.
So you have the option always to stay for the whole meeting, but if you have homework or you need to leave, please feel free to do so. Also, I think it would be a really good idea if we could get the girls a copy of our agenda, so if there's anything that as students they would like to weigh in on our agenda, I would love to hear from them. I mean, it's a great way to make your mark as young adults on how policy is developed and what impacts the high school. So we would love you to be part of that as well. So we'll make sure you get an agenda moving forward.
Thank you.
No pressure, you both have your priorities.
It's all right, like you're still in your sport uniform.
Thank you, ladies.
No, most of our student reps leave, but I just wanted to know the invitation is open.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. To approve the minutes, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 19th Board of Education meeting as submitted?
Shummed.
Seconded.
Discussion?
All eyes are on you, this.
Because you made them move so thoroughly, like, hey, line four is here.
They're fine.
Oh, all right, okay. Mary, we need a roll call vote.
Sure. Chairman Papaholtz?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Nanak?
Yes.
Secretary Siena?
Yes.
Janne Bolsono?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
We are, would anyone mind if we moved Rusty to the top of the agenda so that he can do his presentation earlier and then we'll move through? Because the rest of us need to stay, but Rusty doesn't.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, they don't. They don't have a problem.
Rusty, are you okay to go ahead? All right.
Mr. Martin, would you like a chair?
Am I in the way?
No. It's gonna be cut. It's gonna- It's not gonna go. I can tell ya, I'll talk about it. You see? Okay.
I see it.
It's coming.
It's coming?
Okay. Good evening. What I would like to do this evening is just present something that you're familiar with. We had discussed alternates on the project. If you recall when we met last, there was a lot of discussion about what was happening in the market with regard to where bids were coming in. And we had developed a number of alternates over time. So this is jumping on me. And I'm gonna go through that list so that you graphically can understand what those alternates were and also what our status on those alternates is. One of the reasons is where we are currently with the bids is we're close to budget, but that does not include the alternates. So the reason you develop alternates is to give you options. So we have about five bid packages that are being rebid because we either got no bid on them or we only had a single bid on them. So with that in mind, we're rebidding them. And one of them is site concrete, one of them is landscaping. So that's why at this point we're considering all the alternates that we've had discussions with the building committee and there were members on the committee that said, you know, some items need to be decided by the board, the Board of Education, and that they wanted to hear from you as well. So this was a good opportunity to be able to present that. So alternate number one in our bid package is the north parking lot. And what it entails is just to repave that existing parking lot. We pulled that out. Currently, there's a value of over $200,000 for that repaving. The committee has put that on hold and we don't have to accept or take any action on these till all the bids are in. But that is alternate number one.
So not to repave the parking lot?
So if we don't accept this alternate, it would be, it would not be paved. So the alternate is to pave it at an additional cost.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the north parking lot was supposed to be for, is that for students or teachers?
Current students, sir.
Okay, good. Can you turn and change slides?
Yeah.
So it would remain as it is currently?
I'm sorry?
So it would remain as it is currently?
It would remain as it is currently, or it would be done later on, or the town would do it directly. So that's-
Okay, got it, all right.
So it stays as field parking for sporting events in its same location. The only thing different is where that new field is. That's existing park and that becomes a new field.
I was just in the parking lot, that's why I was like, I just wanna make sure I'm in it all the time.
Same parking, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Frozen, there it is, okay. So alternate number two is, as you all know, we have designed a metal roof for the building. We also had an alternate to design it as a PVC roof. In this particular case, the profile is the same. The material we've done PVC ribbed, it sort of looks like a metal roof, but it's a PVC membrane roof. This alternate was developed again because of the cost differential. It's a fairly significant number. It's anywhere from $400,000 to $600,000 to go to the metal roof versus the PVC roof. So that's another alternate. The committee has not made a determination on whether we move forward with this alternate, but it's just one of the alternates that needs to be, will need to be decided on.
So Rusty, how long does a metal roof last in comparison to a PVC roof?
Metal roof lasts 30, 40, 50 years. PVC roofs, probably in the 20 to 30 year range. You have to replace them in that timeframe. I mean, metal roofs, depending on, you know, as long as it's done well, it can last for a long time. So that is a concern. That's one of the things, the reason we've developed the alternate is really more budget-driven. If we had all the money and there was no issues budget-wise, I'm sure the committee would be going in the direction of the metal roof.
So they're holding up the decision, they're not making it yet?
That's right, at this point they've held up the decision.
It's a big enough, it's a big enough expense that we're going to look at the difference between the roofs. There are several high schools that were built with both PVC and others with metal. We've taken some pictures from a somewhat recent high school, a 10-year ago, Graham High School was built with PVC roof. So we're planning a field trip to go take a look and see how it's held up.
And you're talking to people during that field trip to ask about maintenance and-
We wanna see pigmentation, we wanna see if there's been any kind of warping. I was dead set against the PVC roof, but I'm on this committee. And one of, probably the, one of the two things that I've kind of got my hitch in my kit of is my wife who's staying in Texas. The thing that I felt was it does have the ability to work more and it's not gonna have as much, you know, 10-year percent on this project that we're building to be a very longstanding school. That said, there's been changes in PVC roofs. They have different ways to joint them out and to cement them in. So we're looking at it as an alternate because there is a significant difference between the two numbers.
And so Jeff being a finance guy, you did the cost analysis, you knew too as far as maintenance over a 10-year period, 20-year period, 30, and replacement? Because sometimes the less expensive option upfront is not the less expensive.
It is up being the less, absolutely.
It minds up being more expensive in the long run. So it's really important to do that analysis and not take the cost right upfront.
Absolutely, that's what we're doing.
Actually, Graham High School was one of my projects. I did that in 2006, so I'm very familiar with the product.
So right now we're scheduled for the PVC, that's what's in there for now?
That's correct. And to add a metal roof would be an additional-
However, it was drawn with a metal roof.
I'm sorry?
It was drawn with a metal roof. So the drawings initially were put in there, hence why. It was one of the things that I felt very important. So it's an area where if there are other add alternates that we'll consider, there may be other ways to save money with not changing, you know, the overall structure of the building.
And where are we budget-wise right now?
Right on budget, which doesn't give us a lot of flexibility when it comes to add alternates, as Rusty was saying. These things are things that we can add and delete to change the cost. Obviously, materials is a big difference, you know, there's a lot of difference between, you know, this year and two years ago and likely in the near future as well.
So we keep it on our radar, we track it and-
Correct. But we have to essentially rank these add alternates by-
We have to rank them priority?
Exactly, by priority and financial strength.
And whether these decisions have to be made by-
We don't have a lot of time. Probably in the next three weeks or so, we have to come up with a, make a decision.
I personally feel-
It's not, it's not a lot of time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oops, next one. Alternate number three is the green roof, where the science program, if you recall, the vegetative roof, which is part of the science program. So this was identified as an alternate as well. In many cases, we don't have all the cost data. So this is one of the alternates. We're waiting on the landscaping information to come in. And what happened is, you know, as Jeff was mentioning, the cost of some of the alternates, if you have an alternate that's like the roof, which is $600,000, let's say, you know, the question may come up, do you wanna do that alternate? Or do you wanna do maybe five or six others? And so that's the type of value evaluation that we'll do. To me, this is part of the educational program, you know, we've got opening up off the science labs, etc. So that's something that the board would need to weigh in on.
Is there anyone from the science, from the head of the science program? Where's, is she here?
Hi.
Hi. What is your feeling about this type of room? I'd love to get your input, like it-
It's an amazing idea and I would love to see it stay for our biology and the department of the science program. It would be invaluable.
So you would definitely be able to use it curriculum-wise and you feel like students would, education would be enhanced by it?
And even, you know, I think for, if they were to build a greenhouse, then even whoever, you know, who drove work in greenhouse, I think would love to bring students up there and working there as well. That would be very, very beneficial to the campus.
Have you seen yourself incorporating it into your classes? Are they going out there to like have a class or how are you incorporating it?
Well, my vision would be laboratory, you know, experiments having to do with like things like mercury or it's just, it's a ton of sunlight, it's contributing to the growth and things like that. Also maybe limiting nutrients, good sort of plants, pollinating growth, putting pollinators, you know, plant, pollinating plants in, trying to encourage, you know, ecosystems to flourish and that's something that if anything that has the environmental end, I think my colleague, she's worked at, she's been towards that. She's thrilled with that and her classroom is happy to do it. And she's very excited to get out there and work with that.
Thank you for your input.
And I just put you on the spot completely, so I know you didn't even like that.
This replaces-
I apologize, but I just wanted you to have an opportunity to be heard.
Yeah, sure, okay.
So this replaces the existing greenhouse that is currently incorporated to everything that was said, plus the program of Babujo and the special needs and life skills students. So it's not just the science department, it's a multi-function.
It's a multi-function, okay.
So wait, so this does not exist? Say it did not exist, could you have the greenhouse?
No, the greenhouse is gone.
The greenhouse has gone no matter what, this is our only opportunity.
This is not really an opportunity.
It's not really an opportunity.
This is something that's part of the educational component of the building that involves students directly. So the rooftop, you're gonna have to make a decision based upon longevity, price, all of those things that play into, but this is a student impact education.
So till the landscaping numbers come in, we won't know. Right now, we're tracking about $15,000, but that's not an accurate number because it doesn't include vegetation.
The landscaping, the quote that we're getting on that is not accurate because it's so far off. We haven't gotten, you know, really to get into what is gonna actually turn out to be.
The next one is Mace New Vineyard. We had looked at an option of changing some of the veneer products on the building. This is actually a credit to the project, but we did have a discussion with the building committee and the building committee rejected this particular option, which, you know, I had, I was participated in that discussion. It's because the value that we're getting for what we're deleting is just not there. And so it makes no sense to take that kind of a credit for something that's valued at much, much more than that. So the committee agreed and said, we're gonna reject it.
And you agree with that as well?
Yes. This particular alternate was put in place because there's data lines coming in from the middle school. So the idea was to bring those and keep them up in the ceiling space of the connector. The construction manager is very concerned about how well this will work in terms of, we don't wanna come back later on and try to connect those lines and then find that they're not working. So the value of this was fairly, it was not that much, I think it was in the $10,000 to $15,000 range, to just run all new lines and be completely assured that the connectivity is gonna be there. And we thought it was the best approach to not, you know, have to go back afterwards and do anything.
I don't think connectivity would be an issue in a school.
And this was accepted by the building committee.
Perfect.
So as part of the site, we had introduced these gates because some of the concerns that had been expressed to us throughout the approval process, planning, zoning, etc., especially by neighbors, is people driving through the site, coming, going, you know, taking the shortcut, so to speak, and especially during the school hours. And we have students coming out of the building and going to the fields. And so what was agreed to is that we put gates at each end of that section of the driveway and that's represented by these little red, hard to see, right, one right there and one right there. So there are automatic gates, people will have card access readers so that the police department, fire department, they have that. And that's part of the gate, cost of the gates. Now, it turns out that those gates have to be made into an alternate. And so right now, this is one of the alternates that says, do we accept putting in the gates or not putting in the gates?
And how much would it cost?
It's about $75,000, but there's a security component that's still not resolved. So it could be more than that.
I'll speak to this, if you don't mind me interjecting, my fellow just. This is my number one. This is the part on the mobility committee that I have the most, you know, problem with. The way this is built, we are now transitioning what was once a road that did not have flow of traffic in a main part of the campus to a road that is cutting directly through the campus, which to me is a life safety issue. We're gonna have, keep going through gym class, going through this main road. We're going to have after-school sports, football players, basketball, you know, field hockey players, soccer players, baseball players, softball players going through this and general population going over to that area to commigrate. We already have, you already know, kids tend not to pay attention. Their cell phones are glued to their nose as our adults. People use this as a cut-through from 80, from 22 to 80. My suggestion, which I don't know if it's viable, and it's been, the building committee actually thought it was viable, but I believe we're taking some pushback from fire marshal, is to eliminate the road altogether and to have exits for just that north parking lot, out to Caputo and then everything else going out to 80, which makes sense versus having a road going through the middle of our campus. Again, a life safety issue that-
I thought that was in the buses drop-off.
I do wanna, I do wanna interject here.
Isn't that where the buses drop off?
We may not end up doing this, but I understand that. So there are other ways to go about making that not utilized, but still being able to utilize by the fire department, by still making it a walking path and having the ability to have car or fire truck go through, but eliminating overall traffic. Hence, either the gates or putting some kind of semi-structure that you can screw in and screw out is like a barrier.
I've heard, you know, this within the last week and I've had conversations with the chief of the fire department, the police department and the fire marshal. And I'm in agreement, I am strongly opposed to removing that access point for many reasons, for life safety reasons, with our ability in a crisis where we are gonna be exiting 1,000-plus students out of both buildings without the ability to get vehicles, emergency vehicles through that back area. I'm not opposed to gating that. I wouldn't spend a lot of money on electronic gates. There are swing gates that we could put in and lock that are much more reasonably cost-effective that we could do. We've done that in other areas. The people that have our Knox boxes get into our schools with the ability to have a key. That's a very simplistic way to do it, but that access road is a game changer. Already, right now, when we go to dump the auditorium with parking, we're taking everyone and putting them out through one exit onto Route 80. It would be absolutely chaotic if we have a crisis situation where we have to, we have to get emergency personnel in there and we have people exiting one egress area. We're setting ourselves up for a catastrophe.
I agree with you.
I'm strongly opposed to-
So perhaps a better alternative?
We're not taking, we're not getting rid of the area to actually drive through if there was an emergency.
I'm saying, I want the ability to have that area when we have overflow traffic and parking from the auditorium to go back and park behind the building. When we have sporting events where we have to come the other way and park out in front. Have a gate to close it. We have students crossing, they're high school age students, middle age students, students that take on that responsibility now and are able to do that.
Yeah, they're doing it now.
They do it.
They cross to the intermediate school.
And we, they cross, we've had no problems with that. This is something, the other things, I'm really, safety is my highest priority. It always has been, it always will be. And I think by eliminating this in a crisis with the number of people that we have that we would have to get off campus and only have one access point from the rear in the front and back, without being able to bring in apparatus, fire, additional vehicles. If we have to get 400 or 500 vehicles off that lot, we're setting ourselves up for a real problem. And I know fire and police are not in favor of this.
Not, they were getting rid of the road.
They do not want to get rid of the road.
And do they have an opinion on whether has the gate, has to be automatic or if it can-
The gate, it's up to us, whatever is feasible.
So perhaps the cost of the gate is the alternative?
Right. We don't have to have a fancy electronic fake gate, you know, then you lose the cards, you lose the fobs. If it's a swing gate that has a lock, that everyone has the combination or the key that needs to have it, it's cost-effective. And then we leave it open when we want, we close it when we want.
Well, the kids are already crossing where the traffic comes through, go to the intermediate school.
To the tennis courts, to every- To the tennis courts, to every-
Yeah, they're crossing back and forth anyways. I mean, they need, I mean, I think some route, but they need to go down across the street.
Right. I, I think though, what Jeff is saying, I mean, I'm hearing health and safety from both aspects, right?
Yeah, no, I hear.
Well, there's gonna be a lot of foot traffic going into the fields at different points where students are leaving school and kids are crossing to field, and kids aren't the most careful driver, let's face it. But like, that, that's a time when that area needs to be gated, right? Like, if we're gonna-
You gated at the end of your school day.
You gated, right? Like, so I hear what Jeff is saying, like, there's time where there's high kid traffic there, and there's high kid driving traffic, too. That it could be a fiasco. And then, when we have issues like fire drills, emergencies, overflow, we need that access. Well, there'll be, where there would be less kid walking traffic, but we would need it for more vehicle traffic, so.
For summer events, for auditorium events, for, for use during the school year, when we're renting facilities and using all of our fields and the ability to use both parking lots and getting through. But the biggest one is the apparatus. And then if we do have to exit 1,000-plus, plus our staff, only having one way to get through there and out of there is, is gonna be a nightmare.
So we're gonna, as a board, we're gonna need to look, look at this from two aspects. One, the fiscal, which obviously $100,000 gate is probably not gonna cut it for the committee. And, and for our best interest, right? Because we're gonna wanna put money in other places. And then from a policy standpoint, and an operation standpoint, how-
It's really fire, fire and police. They're, they're gonna control this.
So-
But they're gonna say, we're not approving, we're not approving this schematic without this road. So this is, this goes to-
But that's not safety. That, we're talking about the safety of when that gate's gonna be open and when it's shut.
Oh, that, right.
It cannot be willy-nilly. That's gonna be on, you know, probably Todd, Greg, who, whoever, somebody. But we need to have that buttoned up so we don't have any kids hit because I could say now, right? Like that-
It's, it's a different flow of traffic. I understand they have kids going through the-
We could sit here now.
The other area. Yeah, we have to look at this. It just has to be studied a little bit more. It has to be done soon. It's an important thing.
Yeah, we can do our homework and button it up.
Just to elaborate a little bit, we did meet with the police chief, the, the, the facilities folks, you know, Fran from Public Works, et cetera. They all weighed in on it. And the gates that was, were selected, there was a lot of discussion with the building committee on what type of gates they wanted.
Correct.
They wanted it automated. They wanna make it as easy as possible for the various agencies to come through. And that's why we went in this direction. And it's an expensive gate.
Yeah, it is.
But it, there's a value to it because there's plowing to be done in the winters, all of those things that you have to think about. And those are the parts of discussion.
Yeah.
A lot less expensive than a lawsuit.
Right.
Okay.
So the next one was, we had an option to reduce some cabinetry in, in the classrooms, in a typical classroom. What you're seeing is an image on that wall of all the cabinetry that will be in a, in a classroom. And then we were asked to look at what, what would happen if we took out about three feet, which is two cabinets on the uppers and two on the lower. There's a value of about $40,000 to do that. So that's, that's something, you know, hard to add because we did it as, as it was without the cabinets. But this is what the image was. This is what we had on meetings. This is what we discussed with, with staff and faculty in terms of what needed to be included in a, in a typical room. So we did the, the reduction to say, okay, if we have to, this is what needs to be. We added value to that. So, you know, the question is, do we want to reduce the, the cabinetry by three, three?
Well, how would that impact the teachers, the education and the storage for them? Did anyone ask them?
That's, that's really it, the storage. Because right now, they're working with a lot of storage rooms, bookrooms, et cetera. And, and we, we reduced that number because we're always fighting the, the battle of spare footage for our project because it's based on student enrollment. And so, well, that's one of the reasons we had more cabinetry in these, in these rooms, is to, to be able to provide that additional storage. So-
Right. I mean, I see different classrooms being impacted differently. Like, and I'm not an educator, so I might mispeak, but like, reducing a science classroom where there's like lab-
This is just the, the typical classrooms, the, not science.
Not sci, it's not science. It's just math.
Science or music or math. I mean, it impacts math. So it's math, social studies, English, world language. Those are the typical classrooms spaces that it's-
And I think you just have to be cognizant of, you're never gonna hear a teacher say, gosh, I wish I didn't have this storage. But when you eliminate it and you don't have it, it, it becomes-
Well, how much is it from what they have now to?
Well, the building is so cut up at the high school, it's hard.
Okay, so you can't compare the stuff.
Well, the price tag is $40,000.
We're also moving to a digital age, right? So we shouldn't be having the same amount of textbooks and needing the same amount of storage. Are art teachers, anyone from math, English, language out there?
Well, they still have traditional textbooks. We're not there.
And then the math curriculum has workbooks, so that's-
There's-
Tracing, oh, I like looking.
There's still storage.
Are we looking to move more towards electronic copies?
There are some things that we would. There are things that we would go towards digital, things that change, things that there are constant innovations with in terms of Instagrams or imperials or arrows, things like that. But quite honestly, right now, best practice still shows that books in kids' hands are more meaningful and better for student and learning experience.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's dependent on the subject matter as well. So it's, you know, three feet could make a big difference.
The question is, is it doable? If we reduce the cabinets, is it doable?
They'd have to make it doable. I mean, here's the thing.
I know, but I don't wanna make them suffer. I wanna know, is it feasible?
Russ, again, that's why it's not alternate. You look at-
Do you, what do you think about, about cheap furniture?
I think, as, as they just said, they took, we have, right now, in, in all of our buildings, there are bookrooms. So there are large closets where they keep books and they keep things. And if those things are going to be removed, I think removing five cabinets is going to put you out. You don't want some of the materials that we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on sitting in piles on the floor.
Not really.
Because there's no cabinets for it.
And we don't wanna buy a crappy metal cabinet in a beautiful, zoom room.
It's no different than in your house. You're not gonna say, oh, gosh, I wish I didn't have this storage. It's gonna get used.
In my opinion, this is a small enough value that you really should take advantage and, and put the cabinets in.
Thank you. I'm saying a lot of head nodding. I'm asking the educator, yeah. I, I could say the, the board issuing heads are on the table. That, that's probably, if it impacts education, that's our whole mission on this board is, yeah, we want a really nice building. We wanna make sure that it's sound and sturdy. But our mission is to educate children and to give them the best education possible. So if it's gonna impact their books, if it's gonna impact their connectivity, if it's gonna impact their safety, those are all things we're gonna be really interested in.
And the building committee will take that into account. That's why these are being brought to attention. Ultimately, that's the committee that's gonna make the decision when they look at the financial analysis as to what can be added and deleted. But the reason we wanted to have this conversation, to see what was most important.
If this number was 150,000, 200,000, then I, we would say, yes, it's really not worth it.
Right, right, right. Exactly.
So another alternate that we introduced was to provide UV lighting in certain rooms. And because it's a fairly significant, it's, I'm trying to think about the number, is about $75,000 is the alternate in this particular case. And where it's, it's being implemented is in, in the nurses, all the groups, nurses suite, so that whole clinic area would have UV lighting. All the restrooms throughout the, the building would have UV lighting, and the locker rooms would have UV lighting. The light fixture looks exactly like the other light fixtures, so somebody looking at it will, would not know the difference. But it has another circuit board that gives the, it gives you UV lighting for that particular fixture. I'm pulling together, I was at a seminar for UV lighting, and they were providing the data on how, you know, effective it is. And so I will have that for the building committee on the 23rd, and we'll share that information. There were some folks that said we should do more or do it all, but that's really the least we thought we could do.
So Russ, for people that don't know what the UV lighting is for, the UV lighting essentially is utilized in healthcare facilities and places such that it essentially eliminates jerks, hosters, microorganisms. But so, these are higher traffic areas where you tend to have more people, you know, coming in and out and maybe being ill.
For the hallways then?
Well, obviously, there's the whole school, would be, would be nice to do the whole school. Whether or not it's, it's worth doing just these areas, what we're gonna do for the study is to find out if it's, if you have UV lighting in these specific areas, just these specific areas, does it actually cut down on, on the infection rate? If it doesn't, and you really have to do the whole school, then we're looking at a whole different ball of wax.
How are we gonna find that data?
It, it's hard data to find. I, I would just comment that you, you have UV lighting at the infiltration of air coming in from our rooftop units. So all of the air that funnels through and runs through our central air goes through UV lighting. I would, I would recommend doing something like that. A small area of the building to think that you're going to have an impact on controlling virus.
Is our air now ready? Is our-
Our middle school, we do it at. The classroom units, we don't. But the middle school, we're doing it on top of the rooftop unit right now.
So that's the thought process as well, is it?
And it would be through the system. This is just a Band-Aid for 100,000 square-foot building where you're only doing a very small part of it. I think you're better served with the airflow.
And I missed it. Is that, is the airflow UV lighting already in the building?
So the way we design the building is we have 100% outside air coming in all the time. So a lot of these buildings, they recirculate the air, hence having the UV systems in, in the ductwork. But since we're a circuit, we're just bringing in 100% outside air, all fresh air coming in all the time. We, we don't need to do that.
And it's airborne, so you're-
And we've got a higher levels of HEPA filters and so on.
Okay. Okay. So, so this is probably something we don't need because we have an alternative already in place that would do essentially a more effective job on a larger scale.
Yeah, we're not sure if the-
This is belt and suspenders, so to speak.
Okay.
Hence, what's been followed.
Okay, got it.
This particular irrigation system is for, for the planting around the building. Many times, you know, the, the plants or shrubs that are around the building are in, in bad shape because they're just relying on natural, you know, whatever the rainfall is. It was brought up by one of the committee members to say we should really look at having, you know, a sprinkler system for those plants. And that's what this alternate is.
Can we have less plants?
I'm sorry?
I said, can we have less plants?
We actually have reduced, we have reduced the planting and-
But there's requirements.
We've met certain criteria from zoning.
How about the ISS kids? Where are the plants?
I just, ugly plants are terrible. Ugly dead plants.
Tension, ISS.
I have a question about planting.
It's gonna, that's what I'm saying. I mean-
Yeah, the least amount of maintenance, the better.
I mean, I'm planting native. If you plant native, you have to have less watering. Like, if native plants, you have to less water.
We do have native plants, too.
I think they should be.
So the price tag is this company?
This number I don't have because it's one of the items that's being reviewed.
Oh, okay. I mean, I just, like, I, I, I know it's aesthetically pleasing and we wanna view the whole school.
It's not just about aesthetics, though. It's about environment. A healthy environment has plants. You can't just get rid of plants.
Well, not all of them. But I'm just saying, like, if you're doing it widespread and you're gonna, they're just gonna die because we can't put irrigation in minutes.
Well, that's why if you plant native, it's different ways.
Regardless of how plants there. So whether you're irrigating one plant or five plants, through zoning, you're gonna have to have plants there. So it's not a matter of eliminating completely. So the need is always gonna be there. It's a matter of, as you said, is the irrigation one of those things that we need to do? It's gonna cost enough?
I mean, well, you can't have dead plants, so.
Yeah.
You're, you're investing a lot of money in that space.
But something to consider as, again, this will evolve as well. And that's one of the things that we believe can evolve later in the process versus right now.
I don't know about irrigation. I just know it's dead plants.
Well, the ten is to replace the porcelain tile in the lobby with Torazo floor tile. This was brought up by one of the members of the building committee. So it's just an enhancement of the, the product, the quality of the product that-
Very expensive.
It lasts forever, though.
Torazo, it lasts forever. There's no argument. I've seen it that, you know, 40 years later. But it's, it's very expensive. And, and I think the, the alternate tile has come a long way with our ability to upkeep it with the machines we're using, the wax we're using. So that's one that, you know, it's a floor. It's, it's something that, you know.
It's, it's not throughout the building. It's just the main lobby. The value is approximately $20,000.
Yeah, like, this kind of thing, lasting plants, tile, I can't really speak to it.
That's what we have in the base bid. This, this came up as a request by one of the building committee members, and we certainly said-
Yeah, but it's good to know. I mean, I wouldn't know the difference if that was what it was.
So this alternate, number 11, has to do with the field that's being created right, right there, just next to the north parking lot. We went through various iterations. It's because of the size of the field, it's really not, you know, the way it's, the base design is not an athletic field. But this was to provide irrigation to that particular field and upgrade the quality of that field. And the committee felt that, you know, we should have no-
It's a new field. It's actually covering the area.
In between the building and the parking lot.
Okay.
The committee-
So it's not currently-
Many of the members of the committee do not feel that that field makes a lot of sense. It, it doesn't really serve a purpose for athletics. It's, it's too small.
Well, I mean, cross-country teams could stretch and, and, because cross-country doesn't have a field. So like, you could go and you can exercise and stretch, do more stretching exercises. But is it a must? I don't know. But definitely could be used.
Well, definitely be used. It'd be an area to hungry. It's between-
Small scrudges. I mean, frisbee team maybe could do it because they don't, you know, they're just practicing with their throws. I don't, I mean, I don't know enough about it, but-
So if, if there's no irrigation system, is it still gonna be a field or no field?
It'd still be a field. You'd just be watering. It'd be rainfall in terms of how you're watering.
Or a water cannon. You can water cannon that if you want. There's, there's ways to water the field. I mean, you know, we're fortunate that we have sprinklers on our fields, on all our fields. But there's some that we have a water cannon that, you know, Jerome Harrison, we dragged a water cannon in.
But it's not a regulation field to-
No, it's a short field.
No, it's a very small.
Very small. I mean, would you turn into a parking lot? You have a massive parking lot.
You really can't afford a parking lot because you got two alternatives. You're either grassy-
But you know what? It's kinda like, why have a, it's kinda like the small gym in the intermediate school. It's like, why have a field that's not really a field?
You have to weigh out. What do you, do you-
Greenhouse?
Which would be expensive.
Put a greenhouse there? Not that I don't want those.
Youth sports uses the field. I mean, it's a community campus, so do you love, the youth, youth soccer kids play there? The little bitty, bitty soccer-
Is there some purpose for it?
Well, you could do something like that.
I don't have dimensions of-
You'll always, you're always finding youth sport. Leaving it and paving it, paving it's too expensive. So you're, what's your other choice?
I just didn't want it to turn into a dust bowl.
No, I mean-
With this beautiful school on the avenue.
No, I, I wouldn't worry about that.
It could be an area to study. It could be an area to-
You'll, you'll-
As long as it can be kept without irrigation and it's, it's not gonna look-
I mean, a water cannon is a very simplistic way to do fields. Many, many districts use water cannons.
This one is stamped concrete in lieu of the, the pavers. You can see we've got sort of concrete or Masonry pavers on, on the ground. Stained concrete has been proposed as an alternate to that. We don't have all the cost information on it from preliminary data that we had. It looked like a credit back to us, but we don't think that's accurate. So till we have the, the final bids, we won't know, you know, what the cost on this is. Either way, it's, it could be fine. So we don't have a problem with either one of them. Those, this area right here where the, the buses would be, and drop off would be coming out, this, this red line right there, we, there was a proposal to, to replace that with granite curbs instead of extruded precast concrete curbs. And so there's a, there's a price for that. There's actually two versions of this. There's granite curbs or precast curbs. Both of them, granite is roughly $50,000 more, although there's a credit that hasn't been, again, received yet, so we can't say what the final number is. I believe the town would have preferred the granite curbs. And then the precast concrete curbs are about $150,000. So those are either, any which, any direction that we go in would be fine at the end of the day. So till we have all the numbers, it really doesn't impact-
The granite, you'll drive to any of our campuses and you'll see large chunks of the curbing, the asphalt curbing all over the place. The granite curbing stands up much better. It's more durable. It's more salt resistant. And with the plows, they don't get knocked 10 feet.
How about the concrete curb, though? Is a concrete and a granite curb similar in regard?
I'm guessing the granite is much, much more durable.
Concrete curbs is slightly, it's slightly more integrity than the typical curbing, asphalt curbing.
With salt and everything, they'll- With salt and everything, they'll concrete.
So again, like I'm sure...
You can combat some of the salt issues if you use a heavier concrete, heavier gate concrete. Still, at that, the granite's gonna hold up.
I mean, I guess you just, again, have to do a financial analysis over time, right? Like, you know, that's what I worry about. Like, in this meeting, like, there's, we have building experts, but Jeff, that's where I think your expertise of finance comes in, should really do those long-term analyses. Because if, if you don't do that, we can, you know, pay a cheaper price upfront and then we're catching up with it later. And now we're trying to figure out a capital budget and the taxpayers and the mill rates changing and we're gonna be like, oh, just put this one in. So that's really, really problematic on that.
And the choices you have, we don't have bituminous or asphalt curbing. We have an extruded concrete curb as base bid. We have the granite. And then we have a precast concrete, which is a much more heavy-duty profile. So whether we go with precast or the base bid or even the granite, you won't be, you'll be better off than the asphalt curbs that you typically see.
Yeah, and right now it's a whole different situation.
Yeah, they're gone. Every year you replace it. And every building.
We don't want to do that.
And then this is just, there was two alternates. One is 13, which is the granite, and 14 was the precast. So we just talked about that as well. There's a bituminous sidewalk from, from this parking lot right here to this connector right there that goes out to the athletic fields. And there was, you know, the question was, should that be concrete or bituminous? So the value on that is fairly small, but again, that section is being rebit, so I don't have a final answer on that. Outdoor tables and chairs, this is an alternate. If you're, well, this is outside the cafeteria, so it's for dining as well as for classrooms. So there's about 11 tables, six seats per table. The value on this came in at $50,000. I've looked at all the different alternates and anything that's gonna go outside that needs to be durable, there's no, I've looked at the cheaper alternates and options, we don't want to go there. So if we're having seating, I wanted to bet the number to make sure we weren't, you know, that they weren't throwing a really high number, and everything that I've got back says that that number is a really good number. So that's one of the alternates.
I think it was the table and chairs. What are the side things?
So in our bid, it's actually the ones that are on the side. Those are two of the manufacturers that we recommended, not the tables and chairs. The tables and chairs were just renditions when we were doing concepts.
That's much prettier. The ones on the side are horrendous again.
But they look like they're actually the last.
I mean, tables and chairs would be nice, but they're harder to secure and...
They're easier to steal.
Steal, move around, fall over.
They're all pretty set. They're all pretty set. I'm not saying have to get them.
We're missing a golf cart right now, so I'm worried about the chairs and the tables.
That was true. I thought I heard that.
I think it's the tick-tock craze right now, that, you know, what's going on around the country.
So one of the things that we had in our project was lightning protection. And, you know, the idea was, do we delete the lightning protection? It's not required by code, but there's a strong feeling that it should be kept in the project. So when it says rejected, it means we will keep it in the project.
Oh, good. Okay.
And the committee voted on that. All the 18 bidirectional amplification system, this came in sort of later in the day. This is to enhance the quality of sound, for security, for communication with the police department and the fire department. You know, they have a hard time with their communications, and this system will amplify that so that the communication is a lot easier. There's more to be discussed about this particular system because there was some discussion that if we do it here, we're have to do it at the, at the middle school as well, at the intermediate school. So, and that's much larger, so it would more than double that cost. So the question really is, how do you finance it?
What about the other schools? Do they have that?
Well, not, not this, but on this campus, it would be critical with the intermediate school because we have the three security guards that carry police communication. So I, we don't have bidirectional amplification systems in any building. And we have, when we have a system in the town, where we're looking for tower space, because dependent upon where you're at in the town, you have a difficult time with frequency. So this is something that...
That just kind of made me nervous right there, like, that just made me a little nervous.
So this was never in the scope of the project or the budget, so this might be a question for the council to say how they want to finance something like that, if they want to add it to the scope.
Something that we can add, we've talked about bringing it to the council and some funding for this.
How does this relate to the communication system?
It's related somewhat to the communication system, but this is specifically for these particular buildings. And we've had word from, from fire department that it's very difficult to have in case you want to land the building. The chopstick, again, poses a life safety issue. So this is something that maybe would be a different project that we would bring to the council as a, as a need for the town.
Yeah, 'cause I'm seeing it as a bigger issue than just the high school and the school.
There was an additional data drop asked for in each of the, in each of the rooms that was made an alternate. We have wireless throughout the building, and we have hard data drops. I believe we have three data drops for space. So the additional data drop, you know, the question is, do we really need that additional data drop? The committee debated that. They actually rejected the additional data drop because...
Were investigators consulted? I mean, there's a difference between building items and education items, and that's, I don't know if you need an additional data drop. Did anybody talk about that?
So we did talk about the...
It's solid?
Yeah, we have wireless. Yeah. You're not losing these data, we're just, they're, whether to add more. So we felt that adding more would not be used because everything tends to be wireless now. We have a great wireless system. So essentially, we're just gonna add something extra that we don't need.
Okay.
Bruce, have you aware of any of this, or?
We don't need it.
Do you think that we don't need it?
Bruce is a man of very few words. He said, "We don't need it."
I just have to get...
Bruce, thanks for your input. I love it. Save money.
Perfect. We don't need it. All right, good. We don't need it. I feel much better.
Alternate twenty was a gutter melt system. This is more the gutters on the building to create some heat there so that in the winter that they melt the snow and ice. It's not something that's required, and the committee voted to say, it was nice to have, but we don't need it, so they rejected it. Snow melt system, this was for the sidewalks, really more so under the canopies, so that you don't track all that dirt, et cetera, into the building. Even though we have anti-cracking grades in front of the building, this will certainly help. It's a big-ticket item, but the committee has decided that this is something that they need to weigh in on some more. So nothing has been finalized at this point, but they haven't taken it off the table.
Okay.
And then this space, which is an outdoor classroom, has been made into an alternate. Right now, it's a tiered space for seating. The alternate is just to have a plain area that just, where you can put some benches in there. We are, this is being bid at this point, so we don't know what the value is. And so once we know what the value is, we may have to talk about whether we want to keep that outdoor classroom as a tiered classroom or just change it to...
Well, we have a few outdoor spaces now, right? We have the one with the tables that I mean, we have the roof, probably, right? Like, so we have a bunch of alternatives. So if we can't get them all, maybe Jeffy can make sure we get a couple.
Yeah, we don't want to change the theme.
No, I know, but there was that other one with the ugly tables.
Those were eating.
That's more hungry.
That was cafeteria.
That stays. That's for the auditorium, too.
And where's this, though? Where is this?
This is on the backside of the school, where that road is.
By the media center.
Yeah, that's there. People are lining by.
So those were the alternates. I did have, get rid of the next slide.
Oh, work.
So you've already had these discussions, and I don't want to belabor it, but I did have an image of what the approved, the approved site plan was. And if you go to the next slide, because the committee asked me to do a rendition of what I would do if we took that driveway away. I needed that information because in order to get our final, final plan, we need the local officials to sign off on it. So we had sent this data, this information to the police, the fire. So everybody has it in the building department so that there's, you know, it's been approved and through zoning, et cetera, so they need to weigh in on it. And we don't want to go too far ahead of ourselves only to find that they're rejecting it. So, you know, but it just gives you some idea of what we're talking about.
I know the fire mar, the fire chief, I have his response. It's not...
One of the discussions we had was about the number of cameras. I thought that was supposed to be brought up to stop, because one of them, one of the numbers of 75 was to go to less pixels.
So one of the, and that wasn't discussed as an alternate, but the suggestion that was made is to, we have 109 cameras, five megapixel cameras on, in the bid package. And we were gonna look at reducing them to maybe 75 in a range in that, you know, some, to have a reduction there. And also to go with a different quality of camera in terms of the resolutions. Our, our security consultant was looking into that. We were opening up the specifications because we had a sole source specification. We've got approval from the state to do, to go with a manufacturer that you were already familiar with and were using. So we've done a number of things to open it up. At the worst, we would keep all the infrastructure wiring to those 109 locations, and if we have to, then reduce some cameras. So I think what we're gonna do is go with unit prices on the cameras to say, look, it's 75, and then everything beyond that, how much per unit was that gonna be as an additional cost? But we think...
So it's not like a crazy society, we're gonna reduce our visibility?
So just for, so you have a comparative analysis of the district. I currently have 110 cameras in my entire district, in all four buildings. I have 110. So I'm averaging 25, and I'm covering all external parking lots into, not that they want to know it, but all internal areas. So to go from the total amount in the district equal the number in that high school, that high school will be very secure.
And our security people are obviously gonna be working, right?
They're, nothing changes.
If they're comfortable, uncomfortable, I think so.
Yes, I think it's like anything else, the way you do it is, if we cut it to 75, we wire for 109. We leave it, we assess it, and then we come back to it. We have a great working relationship with our camera company, our security company, so I have no problem with coming back to that.
And it'll be in place.
Yes. I mean, the key is that you don't want to eliminate your infrastructure. You want to have that there so you can have these at any time. You know, at the end of the project, all goes well, there'll be contingency funds available for...
It's all gonna be prioritized.
Right. Because there's also furnishings that need to be purchased and so on, so that will be discussed. So that was the extent of the presentation. As you know, the phasing of the project has been changed from a three-phase to a two-phase, so that was, you know, that earlier on.
Wait, I didn't know that.
Or timelines, so it'll shift.
So tell us about that.
It'll shift with the timeline.
No, I shouldn't have. I'm sorry.
I feel for anyone else now, but I wasn't at the meeting. I haven't been at the last. So tell us about it.
So actually, if you look at the screen, you know, we'd always had, the first section that we demolished right now is that L section. And the plan was to then do the Y and then do the rest of it. Because of some of the complications in the delivery of material, especially steel, it changed everything because we had to order steel now and we were not gonna get it till April. And that's why we expedited the steel packages so that we could get those orders in. When we do that, it changes the final completion dates of phase, phase one. So phase one now is finishing in December, in that, in that timeframe of 2022. And when you do that, then we're going to then demolish all of the rest of the building. And, you know, so for a period of time, you will not have as many classrooms as you were anticipating, Abby. You're gonna have the gym and some of the tech rooms available to us. That will not be possible.
So we'll have to be very flexible in scheduling when we get out two years. Rusty?
Yeah.
So are the kids going to still be in new school next September?
No, December.
So it'll go into...
No, they won't be in new school.
It'll be December?
It'll be...
So the project's not on time? The project is delayed? Because our original estimate was, oh. So you could call it whatever you like, but it is delayed.
Just, is it December?
Their schedule says...
The fact is that it's delayed. And I'm not, I'm not denying, I'm just saying, like...
No, that's, originally, we were going to, the students were going to be in school in September for phase one. And the new structure. Now it's probably gonna be after the Christmas break.
So they'll most likely be in it in January?
Yes.
Mid-year.
So midway.
At the second mark here.
At the second mark here. Okay, and then...
Again, there's a lot of mitigating circumstances that we had no control over.
No, but I did not, I was not aware about that, that date.
No, neither. That's fine. But, I mean, we've been saying, I've been hearing that the project is on time and under budget, and neither of those, neither of those points is accurate. So...
Were we at budget?
We're at budget. But under budget and at budget is different.
Yeah, I agree. One point, not even under, is what I...
Both is fine, I just want to make sure I have the facts, because that's what we want. We want to have the facts to know what we do. Okay, so now, our school will be ready for the kids in January, and then the next phase...
Which is, which is the gymnasium. Actually, the whole of the rest of the project will be ready in, I think it's March the following year.
Of 23. And then we're, then that's it?
And then that's it. You're done.
So the third phase, there was landscaping. So really, what this does is it knocks the phase out. It bumps the second one up.
Yeah, exactly.
So for four months, in my opinion, we're better off with two phases.
Well, since you're the kids, you could have gotten some buildings.
So we're still talking from now, less than two years.
They wait to 60.
The point where we're gonna have to be careful is that January scheduling date? Is that where we have to be careful? Because we'll have less rooms?
So as we get closer, the, already, the high school's done an amazing job with 13 So as we get closer, the, already, the high school's done an amazing job with 13 less classrooms. This is going to be a layup compared to what they've already done to start the new school year.
Okay.
So with the Christmas break and the January break, they'll have way in advance planned this all out, which they've already done to get into this year. That's the least of my worries.
Okay.
I just, my biggest thing right now.
There'll be plenty of classrooms, right?
There'll be plenty of space.
There's other areas to utilize as well.
Perfect, okay, perfect.
So we'll be good.
All right, good, now we know.
The steel thing is my biggest worry, because it's not, it's not unlike any other product that we're trying to get right now. Everything is on backlog.
And that's what drove the schedule, basically, just we couldn't get them to.
So a tremendous amount of steel coming into the state has been taken up by the amount of Amazon.
Amazon has killed the lead.
They've taken a tremendous amount, so it was very important to have the steel package taken care of. We have to build these special processes, the way this building's being built, it's not something you can, it's not boilerplate.
But you're saying, you're saying March of 23, that's less than two years.
Mm-hmm.
But they're in the main academic wing in January. The three-story, and then the second whole phase is that, the rest of the building.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, my son's a junior, so he'll be in for, you know, the rest.
Second semester.
Second semester.
Actually, when I said March, I'm trying to, because I was just trying to.
It's January 23.
Yes, one year and then another year after they move into the, into the new building, will the rest of the project will be?
Yeah, so it's January 23 and March 24. Yeah, all right. I was with you mentally.
Any, any other questions for Rusty?
No, thank you, Rusty.
Rusty, much.
Thank you. I really appreciate your effort.
Rusty, you're dismissed, just like the students. You're free to stay if you'd like.
I'm sure you have homework to do.
You're free to stay.
Thank you, Rusty.
All right. Yeah, we're going to move on. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Mr. Alexander Grizzi, integrated science teacher at North Ramford High School, effective August 27, 2021. Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Katie Traynor, instrumental music teacher at North Ramford High School, effective August 27, 2021. Second? Discussion?
I just want to recognize Ms. Traynor. As you know, she was our instrumental music instructor band teacher. And she co-chaired the marching band, which earned national and New England recognition, state recognition. Brought our musical program to another level. She's been a, she was a phenomenal teacher and educator and got so involved with the school community. She's accepted a job as an administrator in a neighboring community as an assistant principal. So it's, it's, it's kudos to her and then a credit to North Ramford for preparing her for that next step. So we wish her the best.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Scott, do you want to talk about appointments?
Just that I've listed the, under Exhibit B, the coaches for the season, the volunteers. And I will send you the updated list because I'm still trying, of hires, because I haven't filled a couple of positions yet. So I have no moves for hires for a school psychologist and for two long-term math positions at the high school. So that's to be continued. They're posted and we are waiting. We have a date of September 27 for our new instructional music teacher to start, so I'll wait to the next meeting then.
Okay.
Because you, you never know, in this job market.
Yeah.
Until they're here and working, I don't want to introduce them. Okay?
Yeah, do you want to just move right into your superintendent's report?
I sure do. Recognition, I recognized our two young ladies that are going to be working with us as senior board members, student reps. There are no donations at this time. Communication, the buildings have been very busy, extremely busy getting open to the new school year. Obviously, you've heard a lot, and I'll speak to, under the CDC and the public health requirements and how we're doing. I'll get to that later in the report. So if there's any questions for the administrative team, they're here this evening. I know they're anxious to engage with any questions. If not, I'm going to move to the, to the finance report.
Okay.
Martha?
You have the report in front of you, I apologize, I have the wrong gain on it. The 14th, it's really for today. Update on your, your financial system. I had all-day training today. It was the first training where we actually got to see what the modules look like. For the past three trainings, training sessions, we've worked very hard on the new chart of accounts. And what we've been doing is actually breaking out each of the segments of the new chart, looking at what we currently have. And then using the uniform chart of accounts as a guide, developing what it should be. And in the same process, developing a crosswalk.
Okay.
So it's been a very tedious process, but I'm told this is the hardest part. And we're just to the point now where we can start to begin to string those segments together to actually form the new account number. I laid out for you what our current structure is, just very quickly. It goes year, fund, object, function, level, location, and type. Under the new Munis software, we, it will just be fund, function, location, type, and object. And we've actually increased the number of digits in the function from four to five to be able to use the state identification number for grants directly in the account number. And we've changed the, we've eliminated the level and combined the level and location into one location. So in other words, Jerome right now is currently 1-3, so 1 is elementary and 3 means Jerome. So now it's going to be 103. So it's going to give us a lot of flexibility and it'll be a lot easier for input when you're keying in a requisition or a budget transfer, et cetera.
Just curious, how were you able to eliminate year?
It's not required in the new software. So Alio currently requires it, and it's very tedious because we have to key in that year every single time.
So is this like an auto?
It, it doesn't need it. It uses the fiscal year somehow in the program instead of having it in the account number. So the account number never changes, it's always the same, which is wonderful.
Okay, got it, understood.
I have all-day training again on Monday. We're going to look at, I believe, purchase, purchasing and purchase orders. Today, we focused on general ledger and the budget. And we're going about it very methodically. They, they ask us what we have currently, they show us the system, and then they say, okay, what do you want? How do you want it to work? So we're starting at a very broad level and then we're digging down as we go.
Yeah, they're building no requirements.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's exciting.
Good, good, then I'm happy with it.
As far as the budget, financial report, you do have transfers in your packet, and they are for last fiscal year 2021. And basically, they're cleanup. And what I tried to do was to keep, you know, certified salaries within certified salaries, or, you know, the middle school at the middle school, things like that. So they are all cleanup. And as we go forward in time, the need to hopefully do so many transfers at the end of the year will be less because we'll be more educated on what's appropriate to budget. And they should be at the very end of your packet. I also provided you this time with a Fund 25 printout, and you should have that as well. And if you remember, the Fund 25 is our carryover that the town allowed us to carry over. So you're going to see three different Fund 25 budgets in there. The first one, you'll see all the account numbers end in 000. And those indicate the money from our 1920 budget that we were allowed to carry over. The next set ends in 047, which actually identifies the excess cost money that we were able to carry over from 1920. And the last one, all the account numbers end in 178, which identifies the 2017, 2018 budget we were allowed to carry over. So they're all in Fund 25, but they're all accounted for separately. You will see that there are a few expenditures in the different accounts in 25 now. What I've tried to do is code the things that we're not going to buy every year there. So in other words, the materials, we needed to have the air conditioning function at one of the elementary schools, I think it was Totucket. We, we coded there. The new boil, the new burner we needed for Totucket, I coded there. So I'm trying to use that money for things that we're not necessarily going to have to budget for every year.
Yeah, that makes sense.
They're big, big capital, the chiller.
You don't want reoccurring expenses.
Exactly, because when we go to do our proposed budget next year, we're not going to, you know, we don't want to depend on that money for every day.
That's the chiller, the chiller at Jerome, that's going to be next month, that'll go in, and the burner next year here.
That we replace some chain link fence around some air conditioning units and around the back of auditorium, that expense was coded there. So things like that.
Martha, am I missing the capital page? What, where, like, do you have our capital budget page in here?
No, the, you mean the capital that the town pays for?
They give us money for specific projects.
I don't actually account for that, they do. So if anything is bought through the capital, it all goes through the town. It doesn't go through our purchase order system or our accounting at all.
How come every year, though, they say we don't spend the money and we didn't start the projects?
Well, they're holding, they hold their money.
They hold the money in their little.
So how do we track that expense and the projects are being done?
I don't, they do.
Did I just, did we just identify in the gap? Is that why we can never figure it out and get it right?
No, we called down, we, we called down, we know. We know that 127,000 is sitting there from bathrooms that weren't done two years ago because they were building a new high school. We know that there's 78 for, we, we communicate.
I could ask for a report from them.
Can we help with for every, every meeting? So, and, and just have a list of what items were we asked for and if they were started yet?
Absolutely.
I'm sure Mr. Florio knows where they are in the game, because he's doing them most of all, right? He doesn't know.
What he reported on last, at the last board meeting was an update current to where we're at. So the biggest, the big ones left right now, the chiller is going in next month.
But we're not using the capital money, we're using the carryover money.
We're using carryover for that.
So we ask for the chiller through the capital money?
No, wait a minute, no, 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 that's capital.
No, that's, that's really capital. The burner that we're replacing at Totucket is being paid for out of Fund 25.
Okay.
That was like $5,000, $5,500.
Okay, so yeah, if we could just have that capital?
Sure.
Report, because it would be their report, and then maybe every quarter, just have John come in to give us an update on that? So we know where we are, because the last thing I want is to go into another budget meeting and we don't know where that money is and we don't know where those projects are, because that'll be like third year running, and Jeff will be on town council and will not be happy with us.
Yeah, you don't want to deal with.
So I guess that's the official announcement that you're going to town council.
Oh, it's not being elected, but yeah.
But all you have to do is vote for yourself, so there you go.
If you lose, that's not going to, that's not going to look good.
This will not be happy with us either, so.
It's not going to look good if you.
That's right.
If you don't vote.
What do they have scheduled? What do they always tell me, cast one vote?
Cast one vote, cast one vote for yourself and you're in.
All right, I will have a grant report for you next month. We're still, I'm still compiling that.
Oh, good, okay.
So you will see that next month. The 2122 budget, there really isn't much difference from my report last, last month. It's detailed here. We did work very hard over the summer to organize and clean up all of the data that we could, especially going into a new financial system. We're trying to do as much housekeeping now to, to make the conversion smoother.
There's so much eas, these budgets are so much easier to read than the other ones that, from previous years, like, there's so much. I mean, now I get nitpicky, I'm like, oh, I want this, I want that, but I actually understand what you're saying, I mean.
Excellent, because they're clear. And there are the transfers here, so if you could look them over either now or at some point. And I think you need to vote on them for me there.
Those are the end-of-year transfers?
Yes.
Yes, they do need to be voted on. They do need to be voted on. I mean, do you guys want time to look it over?
Can we do that next month? So they, they're digested?
Is it okay to do it? Because there's usually a deadline, so are we going to miss the deadline if we wait till next month?
No, you can, you can take the time to look them over if you have any questions, reach out to me, and then we can have them for approval next time.
Yeah, so if there's any questions, let's send them to Martha with us all copied on it, so we don't like any data with the same questions. And then would we be able to vote them in a, a bundle?
We should be able to, like a Schedule A attached, you know?
If we could vote them in a bundle, that would be a heck of a lot to do.
Yeah.
You could just make it as a Schedule A or, you know, whatever, something like that, as if it's something that's voted in as presented.
Thank you.
That is it?
That's it.
Any questions? Okay, COVID-19 update. So as you know, we're continuing with our district-wide system of letting parents be aware in the district that we do have a positive case for a student or a faculty member in a number of quarantine. We did that last year, continuing it this year. We're in our third full week right now. I had updates sent to me from our nursing supervisor, but it's already outdated from yesterday. So as of 24 hours ago, we had one staff member positive in seven students. But in the last 16 hours, that changed with three additional high school students. So there were a number of quarantines, 15 total, from that one high school situation. And we've had to alter a sporting event for the weekend, we're going to move it and reschedule. So we're working diligently to give our students the opportunity to not miss out and have a, a full season. They've been really good and patient with it, because it's not easy when you're getting ready to play and you're told 48 hours before, well, we can't play because we don't have enough players. The high school had a really busy 24 hours with contact tracing, with notifications, with checking vaccination status. We are warehousing all cards for all students, for all staff, for all coaches. And then we go through and look at who is going to be quarantined and who is not. If you are currently vaccinated, you do not have to quarantine. Those who are not vaccinated have to go through the 10-day quarantine process. So this is not a pitch for whether you choose to or not, it's the reality of the rules that we have to follow. And it puts, puts an extreme amount, another layer of work on all administrators, on my nursing staff, Dr. Welsh, my COVID team advisor, when, when these things come up. It's, it's emotional, because people on the other end of the phone a lot of time don't want to hear that their son or daughter is out for 10 days and they're, they're showing no symptoms. They may not, it's the reality of it, so.
So they are, so let's, just for clarification, they are not considered fully vaccinated till 14 days.
14 after their second shot.
We got to have a copy of their card.
Yeah.
And so if, if they're vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine, but do they have to have a negative test?
No.
So you don't have to have anything, even though you can have.
If you're symptom-free, if you're symptom-free, no. If you're, if you're, if you're showing any symptoms, you're out, you're quarantined, you have to get a PCR test, negative PCR.
Because I know there was a lot of back and forth on the Facebook pages and all that because people are upset that their kids have to quarantine and they're missing sports, but.
We, we don't make the rules?
No, 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 you can just.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah, so I get it.
And it's hard, I get it.
Unfortunately, it's a consequence if you don't, I mean, people are against the vaccine, that's fine, but, you know.
It's, it's just the rules that we follow.
Yeah.
This isn't a school rule, this is a rule that we have.
We have no choice.
This is just that we have to follow.
I happened to be at the high school with Mr. Steffler and, and Nurse Morgan, when, where they were handling this, and our athletic director. And they did an amazing job when we went and met with the kids. And they were disappointed but understood, and they were very respectful, and that's all we can ask.
Yeah.
And how are you handling the schooling for those kids who have to quarantine?
So we are, we are doing what we sent out with connections from classroom teachers through the internet and, and speaking, you know, with them on a regular basis. But we are having a meeting next Wednesday to further discuss if we get large quantities of quarantined students, which I'm at right now, 34, which isn't accurate because of the last 16 hours at the high school, of going to a more live version to kids at home. And I understand, we're trying to balance students not taking advantage and wanting to stay home, because that's not an option, and saying, I was in contact, I was in contact, and expanding this. But in fairness to those who get caught up in a quarantine, because they may have been within three feet and we don't know, and there's not the option. I think we have the obligation to really look at providing more of a thorough.
Providing them with an education?
Well, yes, you go to sit and watch a class, you know, a classroom instructor and be a part of that.
Yeah, because if you miss a day, that's a lot of.
It's not, it's, it's a lot for the teacher, it's a lot for the student, it's a lot for the parent, it's a lot for the coach, who, you know, well, everyone involved has been impacted by this. And this just didn't happen, this is 16 months we've been going through this. And this is not going to end anytime soon.
Well, it's also unfortunate because there are kids being quarantined, and there are kids that don't have to quarantine because they're symptom-free, but there's not enough kids to field, you know, a game or something. So they're still losing out on sports even though they're fully vaccinated, because there's just not enough people to play with the amount of quarantine. It just stays.
So we are.
With that said, do we have enough of mental health staff?
So no, we're still looking for a school psychologist, as I said. We moved our social worker that you added, thank you so much, to split between the high school because of the caseload and TDS. And that's filling a gap, but there's such a need right now. I'm not doing it justice when I tell you, coming off of what everyone has just experienced for 16 months, there's, there's a lot of issues that, that our youngsters are really dealing with, and it's playing out in many different ways.
Now, what happens to a staff member? Should a staff member be positive?
They follow the same.
They're home, do they use sick time?
Quarantining, it, it's dependent, well, that's a whole other conversation. And that involves the teachers' union and attorneys and everything else, so. Our, our fingers are crossed. Last year, it was clear that no, this year it's different, Martha, that.
Well, because we're half and half out.
They're using, they do sick time. If they're sick, they use sick time.
Yeah, they. Yeah, the regulation expires September 30th.
30th, so then they go to using their time.
How is the mandatory testing for those teachers who aren't vaccinated going?
So it's interesting that you asked the mandatory testing, it's going to be if you have the ability to document a medical or religious exemption, you have to test every week. So, it's gonna be interesting to see if those, 95% of our staff, entire staff, 334 staff are vaccinated. So, the other 5%, we'll have to show up on Monday with a negative test to report to work. If they don't have that negative test, they can't come into the building. So they're gonna send it to us electronically, we're gonna warehouse it here in central office, we're gonna know every week for those 15 to 17 employees if they can come to work.
That stresses me out.
It's a lot, I don't think I'm doing a good job of telling you how much work this is to do, barely, it's overwhelming.
I'm just worried you're not gonna have enough subs at this.
Well, the basic problem, and I sent you that article the other day about the shortage of bus drivers, we're down 20%. Datto has been miracle workers, they've been amazing, many towns, the kids are getting phone calls at 10 o'clock at night, we have no transportation, tomorrow for your child, you have to get them to school, the runs have been excessive, because they're doubling and tripling routes.
So they're overpacking the bus?
Well, there's, there's...
When they're afraid of COVID.
Yeah, but you have to understand.
I know, it's not Datto's fault, I'm just saying, like...
I was gonna wait till the board, but I was...
It's every, it's every bus...
They're doing a great job, but I'm just saying, like...
Every bus company is in the same predicament, we're down 20% in the state of Connecticut for bus drivers, and you don't just become a bus driver, you know, with the licensing in the background and everything, it takes about eight weeks to get behind the wheel with a CDL license.
I believe I read that Massachusetts is utilizing some guard, National Guard.
Yes, they called it the National Guard.
Right.
Yeah, they did, they did, to drive the buses. No, I was gonna wait till the board, but I was gonna say that they're doing a phenomenal job, they really, really are.
This is all part of labor, labor shortage, but the lack of fighting labor and the ability for people to actually come back to work.
So can we...
I appreciate the people that show up.
Our manager, our manager is driving Karen Longo, and she's on a bus, she knows routes, the dispatcher who is licensed is driving for us when we have someone call out, so they are...
And I imagine it's gotta be a headache with sporting events too, because we barely have enough to get our kids to and from school, let alone to bus kids to schools for sporting events.
We're looking to push a lot of the games to later in the day, you'll see a lot of the games, so they clear the last run at four, and then those drivers can loop back and pick up, because we don't have excess drivers.
Well, that's at least...
It's a challenge. So any questions on COVID?
Nope.
You're always updated, you're on that email list for when we have cases. Enrollment, you have the enrollment sheet attached, do you?
It's not October 1st.
I had a...
It's not October 1st.
We had, no, it's not the state one, it's the other one, I had one. So, I have one copy I'll read to you, because I didn't run copies. We have 13 new students at Jerome Harrison, you won't find in your packet, 13 new. We have 19 new students at TBS. We have 19 new students at NBIS, and we have 22 new students at NBHS. So if you do the quick math, you'll see that that's a large increase in our student population. Last year at Jerome, we had 368 students, this year we have 403 with our kindergarten classes and our new preschool. So we are at 400-plus students, which is...
That's good.
That increase is kind of unusual, right?
It is, we're seeing it, and you can look at what's happening around New England with people moving, you see new houses going up around North Cranford, there's some building going on, and that's a good sign. Questions on enrollment?
Nope.
CADE, that's the next item that we wanted to discuss to make sure everyone is here. There's an invoice under Exhibit D, if you go to Exhibit D, you'll see the cost for CADE dues, and I will ask you to direct me if you feel you want to continue with CADE services. This past year, we used CADE for one legal question on the special ed access costs, and then I purchased packets of how to be a board member for you. That was the only contact that we had, we obviously did all our negotiations through our firm for four bargaining units. So I'll leave that to you with what you want to do, you have access to their workshops, you have access to their PD, their...
But we still pay for that.
Communications.
Even though we're a member, we still pay for it.
You pay a different rate.
Right, yeah, it's a discounted rate, but you still pay more, right?
And we can still go without being a member, you just pay a little bit more.
Correct. We also could look at with, you know, that excess money, when we conclude this year, you know, we're looking at our negotiations coming to close, we're using different firms for different things within the board, if we wanted to collectively sit at the group and look at our total expenditures for legal, using this CADE money as seed to then look at, do we want to possibly, and then we'd be up to the board, look at going to one house, one firm, and really doing a thorough job of looking at holistically other firms that are working in education around us, and then come back and make a decision.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we discontinue services with the CADE and not pay this invoice.
I'm sorry, we don't, we don't pay the invoice, we just continue our services with CADE, but we don't pay the invoice. I second that.
Discussion?
Yeah. Clear?
I think, Marcy?
We haven't had much use from them, I don't know how many people go online to use their services, but even if you're a member, you're paying these fees, then you have the additional cost for everything that you do. And we already have a law firm that does our policies for us, and we'll repay them. So I don't think that this is $8,190 to give that back.
So I did use CADE for quite a bit during COVID for information purposes. I thought they would be a little bit heavier on the legal service. There are gonna be some changes with our attorney moving forward, Scott and I talked a little bit about it, and we were talking about, and we go into budget this year, doing some research, moving to one firm for all three attorneys and interviewing the firms, and we all can bring a firm to the table, or look and research what firms might be best for the board, whether we stay with one of the firms we currently have, but that we go to one firm, so that all of our needs are met in one spot, and we don't have three different attorneys from three different boards, three different firms. So, I'm okay discontinuing CADE as long as we move to changing our attorney structure.
And again, this would be done during the budget process, we would look at the hourly rates or what we're paying for the three firms, who can do what we're looking for under one house, and try to come up with a more economic, feasible plan that works for the district.
Yep, we'll look at areas of expertise with each firm, we'll look at cost, we'll look at recommendations from other school districts.
Yeah, should we set a foundation of scale for utilizing one firm?
Shall we take a roll call, though?
Roll call question.
Chairman Poppa Holter?
No, that's what he was, that's what I was saying.
Yes.
Roll call, I don't know.
Yes.
Chairman Poppa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Afrio?
Yes.
Secretary Siena?
Yes.
Janet Bolzamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey Mellon?
Yes.
Vincent Mills?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, student achievement, Tracy, I'm gonna turn the next...
You, over.
Next three items over to you.
So student achievement results, I am reserving the right to show you a PowerPoint until our next properly is, when I have the additional results in. You do have printouts, though, of the results that we do have in and compile. So, one of the reasons that it is not as urgent to put these results out is that in the front page of your packet, actually the second page, you will see the state is really urging us not to use the results as we traditionally have, and tempering that data in the hands and the minds of people that don't understand what these results mean could be not helpful in the education and conducive to learning, especially when you talk about achievement and results and how that impacts teaching and learning. So there will be a bigger presentation, where we can talk about all of these things, as well as add our science results and the SAT results, and have one night of achievement results and presentation.
I just have a few questions, so that you can like have it ready. What, like, were half of these students home when they were testing, or were they all here?
So this is what I did, so the way the state wrote down, the first page is how they sent us the information, which I just wanted you all to see that was...
The little TV page?
Yes, well, and it was very dense. So what I did was to change it into a format where what we've always looked at in the past are all the students that came to the tests in the district. So I combined what they consider to be in-person, in-person testers, hybrid in-person testers, and mostly or fully remote in-person testers.
Okay.
So anyone that took the test on our property is included in those numbers. And obviously, I did the same thing for every district that we compare for.
Okay.
Because we were, in our area, we were one of the very few schools that were in school full-time, to try to compare the way the state has broken out, it's difficult. Now, overall, in the large scheme, there were many schools on the Gulf Coast in that way that were in full-time, but our comparisons were not. So what I did was combine them, and it does turn out that about 87% of students in every district did take it in-person, even if they weren't in school full-time, so those results kind of meshed, and they start to be able to become a more accurate view of the achievement within their registers.
So if I could just add to that, and we're gonna come back and revisit, we're gonna tease out the special ed population, we're gonna look at the data, we're, just at a broad brush glance, quick look, my biggest concern was the math instruction, and being remote, or those who were remote, and you'll see that our math results are our largest concern right now. So we'll be able to go back and look at each student individually by strand on this assessment, by teacher, and go through, and then as we start to build our plan towards recouping what students have lost, this has been 16 months, and this is not an excuse, this is something that we're gonna have to do, because we want to get those kids back to where we're knocking on the door of 60-plus percent of kids being at or above, not proficient, but at or above goal. So, there's gonna be a lot of work to do, the math piece is difficult, to say the least, when you're at home watching it on the computer, and that's a real area that we're gonna focus on.
Yeah, we're gonna need that, like, so I'm glad you're gonna give us a whole, I mean, one board meeting might really need to be designated today.
Honestly, if I do this this evening for what I have to do, and I'm happy to do that?
No, I think it requires more attention, and we need that granularity to really understand the drill down and what we need to provide you as a board, because I, year after year, we have issues with test scores, right? Now we just bottom down, pretty much, and it's just circumstances, life's happened, and we need to figure out how to bounce back, right? And how do we do that for our students, our teachers, and our district, right?
We do have pockets of excellence that we want to fill on, and you can see that some of the programs that we have in place are clearly working at grade levels.
Perfect.
So we, they actually, I had the coaches, I may ask them to come back again, hear each speaking to what's happening in their areas, in their buildings, and what we're doing, to start exactly, to rebuild not only the teaching models and which we're using, because they are now forever changed, and so are our students.
Yeah, and if we could have evidence-based data, that would be fantastic.
Of course.
The, really, the, I think the hardest part of all of it has been very difficult, but there was a lot of emphasis with the school improvement grant, we shut down in March before we were gonna test, and there was so much work done, and then we went for the next year, and it's not that it's lost, but it's lost, and that's something that, you know, we're gonna have to really focus on and get...
We lost the momentum, but we're using some of the ESRS funds, much of the ESRS, especially American Rescue Fund, are supposed to be directed to help address deficiencies in gas and accelerate learning. So we are fortunate to have the SIG money, really, that for your project is over, we have additional funds to support the social worker that Scott spoke about, is through those funds, it's a one-year position. So we are being able to capitalize on some of those funds to make sure something, and one of the next things I have to speak about, I don't know if it's the next in order, my computer just went down, is the preschool?
Teacher administrator evaluation plans.
Okay, so let's do preschool real quick, and then I'll go back, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So, one of the things we have to start about, to talk about, is what these funds for these grants do end. If we want to control some of these programs, that we do have to find ways within our own budget to fund them. So currently, I believe I have funding for whole preschool classes secured until 2024. But after that, there may be a chance for us to renew it, it just depends on the amount of money that's available. So what happens is if Smart Start has money available, they will send us a continuation application, and I'm allowed to apply for it, and then we can go over there. If there is no money available, then there's nothing for me to apply for.
So we'll have to keep that on our radar and figure out where it is on our priorities of budget dynamics, but it's good to know upfront before it's like, oh, we don't have preschool.
Right, and normally I would know at least a full year in advance whether or not they expect funding, so we would be able to have those discussions. But as Scott mentioned, we have 15 new students at Jerome, and that will continue for the next few years through funding through Smart Start. As part of the Smart Start funding, we are able to use capital funds. Last time, we built a covered walkway and outfitted a room with furniture and toys and learning materials. This year, what we'll do with some of the money is we are buying some playground equipment, similar to what the older children have upstairs at Jerome. This now, it will be particular for children aged two to five. We are about to go through that accreditation, we have been preparing, as Scott mentioned, about test scores in SIG rent. We were about to go into our NAC accreditation when the school shut down. So a year and a half later, we are now preparing, we have a different teacher in that classroom, a different para, a different curriculum, different coaches, so everything has been changed, but we expect to know whether or not that classroom is accredited by December. And then, depending on whether or not funding continues for the second classroom, if we're able to get it for three years or more, we will be required to have that classroom become accredited. But quite honestly, once one in the building, because if two are in the building together, it will be a much easier process.
Okay.
And I have to say thank you to Lauren Berry, our preschool teachers, particularly Emily Masurbo, Brooke Vaughn is the parent in that classroom, Beth Parker, and Colin Stichwal, which have been instrumental in the amazing list of things we have to do to get this accreditation on the slide. So for teacher evaluation and administrative evaluation, you approved us to use flexibilities last year that the government allowed us to do, we are asking for the same thing. The one thing that is different this year is that we will need to do some evaluation scores on everyone. I'm not sure if there was a motion in the packet, but we do need a motion for you to approve the flexibilities into the existing plan. So if you have to hold that off a month, or can do it, that's fine.
And you're adding scores to it, right?
With summative valuation scores. So it would be to approve the existing 2021 plan for 2022 with the addition of summative ratings for all certified educators.
Okay, voting on it now.
You're writing out?
With addition of summative what?
Summative ratings for all certified educators.
I just want everyone to have a...
And you have all of, I gave you packets that have everything from 2021 and the new, and the new summative rating part.
So then I'll make a motion to approve the existing 2021 plan for 2122 with the addition of summative rating. twenty-two with the addition of summative ratings for all certified educators.
I'll second. Discussion. Mary Lachala?
Chairman of the House of Representatives?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anosio?
Yes.
Secretary Deanna?
Yes.
Jan Goldsham?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Yes.
Vincent May?
Yes.
Thank you.
One thing off your plate, try saying it.
So the high school twenty twenty-one graduation follow-up, I'm pleased and very proud to announce that a hundred percent of the North Cranford High School class of twenty twenty-one have officially graduated. So obviously that's part of our mission, part of our goals that we see every student will, and we had, we had a few students from the year prior that came back for an additional year and had an alternative schedule and were able to earn those credits and then they, they finished and stuff.
Great.
We're really proud of all of them. Great. Okay, the NEAS disennial visit, every ten years, we go through this process to review and renew our accreditation process. We have Megan Redman and Megan Lee, along with Principal Todd Steffler and Assistant Principal Greg Watz here tonight to do a presentation to get you up to speed on what we will be embarking on. I'm not going to ask you to read everything. It's a PowerPoint. If you want to just listen and spin, and then at the end of this, we will need volunteers to serve on this committee, and the dates are there. So, so those of you who do not have busy lives.
Virtual, can I ask which one of you is named?
I got that, but I'll take it, yeah. All right, well, thank you, Mrs. Steffler. I'll be delighted.
I had to put a name and a face together.
All right, so if you want to, if you want to turn, if you want to turn, ladies, so you can see the PowerPoint in that.
This will, this should only take an hour, so. We're going to go through this really quick, but thanks for the time for this. I know it's, it's a busy meeting, but an incredible amount of work goes into this. This only happens once every decade, so it's a really big deal for our school. And NEAS has changed the way that they do these visits. So we're going through a new process, which, which Megan and Meg will talk about, really a growth mindset process. So two years ago, they came here, we did a collaborative conference, and they jointly with us looked at all our programming, looked at our facility, and, and we looked at four priority areas, we established them to work on. So we have two years to put these things in place. They're coming back now with a visit with a new team to see where we're at with those. And, and I, I just think we're in a really good spot. So Megan Lee worked with Meg Redman for the past two years, just incredible. You're going to see a rebranding here, so this is why we thought it was really important to highlight some of these things and share with you. And there is going to be a piece, a board piece to the visit, which happens October third through October sixth. So we're just going to focus on some of the things that make you aware of what's going on, and, and with that NEAS piece that comes in, if there's an interview piece, you guys can be well versed on what we're doing.
Well, in your packets, the little holders that, that we need, on left-hand side is, you know, there are our tenants for the SOAR, along with questions that the students kind of have to ask themselves at that point. Attached to that are the rubrics that we've developed that the students, you know, the teachers will be assessing the students on. And a lot of the statements are, I can and I will, because you really want them to be looking inward, but assessing themselves at the same time. And then on the right-hand side is to make presentations so that, you know, we can kind of, we're going to kind of look through this and if, you know, we were trying to digest, then you can, then you can do that. So we've been showing this to our staff for two years now and over a few years, and, you know, we're about at target now, and this is kind of the end, and, you know, we continue to, to grow from there. Like Greg had mentioned, there's a law of collaboration, talk about growth mindset in terms of, you know, how you're doing this, it's really great for wanting to do X, Y, Z.
So October twenty twenty-one, as you see, that visit is about to occur. And the important piece on those first few days on a Sunday, we're going to need to do a Zoom call with the superintendent and board members to answer specific questions from this team. Okay, so it's not a huge time commitment, but it's a very important part to the process that the board is actively involved in it. So you don't have to tell me tonight, you can tell me tomorrow morning.
How many board members do you need?
It, it doesn't matter. If, the more, the better.
It'll be October third at three o'clock.
So.
Or virtual. It'll be a Zoom invite, you'll need to do a virtual.
You, you all can be present or?
Three o'clock.
Or two, three. Not the October third.
There's no set number. The more, the merrier. If only you two can do it, we, we run with it.
It would be with the chair, the assistant chair of the day committee, so Kathy Cessas and Andre, correct?
Yep.
This is assistant chair.
So these are our four priority areas. This is something that maybe you would be asked on and talked about. The facility, obviously, we're in great shape with that. You know, we're getting a new facility, we can see that live, we're really excited to see that. That has been something that has been talked about in multiple NEAS visits, visits on NEAN, so you've talked about ten, twenty years of, of that. Curriculum documents to be all updated, that's taking place. The vision of the graduate and the interventions, what we're going to kind of focus on today, or tonight, go through that quickly, those, those, we've converted from a mission statement, a traditional mission statement, to a vision of the graduate. So we start all the way at three K and we think, what will a graduate of North Cranford School District look like? So it's not just a North Cranford High School ideal, it's an entire district ideal from building to building.
I really like that.
We thought you would.
Okay.
So Sunday, this will, this will be your piece on Sunday, October third. You'll get, if you, if you are interested in doing this, you'll get a Zoom invite at three o'clock, it'll be virtual, it should run about three or four. Kathy, who's our visiting committee chair, she, she led a collaborative conference, so she was here two years ago, so we're very fortunate with that. She is some of the greatest member of school. She saw classroom observations, the great work that we're doing, and she was really impressed, so she's very excited to come. She was at a cap community this past Monday and spoke to all of her staff as well. So she's really excited to be back.
She is excited to be back, yep.
And then we have school tour, classroom observations, a student work showcase. We actually have a graduate who reached, we reached out to, who's going to come, she's a team manager now at Southern for Team Sports, and that was the Capstone project. So she's going to come back and speak about the impact that Capstone project.
Who was that?
Chelyana Criscop.
Criscop?
Yeah, it's coming back.
Oh, fantastic.
So, you know, Jack Criscop, who does just an amazing job with the Capstone project, will be speaking to that. And then we'll have student work and student showcase and a student gallery. So students work from last year, from this year, and they're going to be able to see some of the great work. They're looking for authentic work, the impact that it had on them, student choice, so those type of designers. Day three, day four. Day two is the only day that they're coming live, the rest of this will be virtual. And we're, we're lucky, we wanted them to come live, we really wanted them to take a tour of the building and do as much as they can in person. So this is where Megan, Megan Lee and Megan Redman, I mean, if you look at our old logo and I know traditionally, that's what we always had, but it's cold, you know, it's a little dark, a little unfocused. The new one on the right is very purposeful, and, and we have our full circle expectations in the past. If I click on this, I don't know, I think Carter graded these, I mean, it's kind of boring.
Not just, no affiliation.
No, no, no. This has, this has been the framework, going to serve us well.
Yeah.
But we have, again, moved that next level of work. And that's the point of the NEAS visit, is they come and see what we're doing and help us take it to that next level. So, you know, when we talk about that next level, Megan Lee and Megan Redman created was really, you know, the acronym of SOAR, so now you see T-Bird SOAR. So we don't have a, a long paragraph mission statement, you know, our, we all see on the lyrics, T-Bird SOAR, and what does that mean? SOAR is the acronym here. And, and the next level is that on this past Wednesday for professional development in preparation for NEAS, Megan and Meg have created with all the departments, rubrics, school-wide rubrics, that have all of these strands in them. So what we have now for our slow bowls is embedded into our, our teacher evaluation piece and what they're doing at, at everyday learning. You guys have anything to add to that?
I mean, one thing I just want to add is it really was a hugely collaborative effort across all of staff members and the vision of the graduate committee that's done work, and as you can see, it's something that we're all very proud of and we're hoping that it's going to really make an impact, not just on student learning, which is obviously a priority, but, you know, also on teaching, making really clear expectations for staff about what we're looking for. Also the highlight for social emotional learning, that's, that's really just, now it's embedded in our practice and what we do. But we were doing that before, it was, I think, a little bit more forward, so I think that's something that is a testament to our staff and our community as well. And I'm just standing in now, so, you know, Meg is really, but they let me stand up here and everybody kind of, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to let her get away with that one. And, and we've been on a lot of visits over the past year, we've done virtual visits to different high schools and they're doing great work, but very few schools are, are at the stage of where we're at with implementation of SOAR into slows, into, into assessments, into rubrics. Students are getting that direct feedback tied with their grades. It, it's pretty impressive work. On flex time, so I'll go through this quickly because you've probably heard about flex time.
Yes, I have.
It's new for the high school. When, when Mr. Schoenmaker and this, this woman are talking about, you know, identifying gaps and where we're at the past sixteen months, flex time is, is our approach to tackling those, and we're really, really excited about what we're doing with flex time. And this is the intervention piece of our priority areas for growth and really expanding our tier-two intervention work. So what is flex time? Flex time is in the middle of day, is every single day. There's three flex, each are twenty-five minutes, one of those is devoted to lunch, so students are eating by grade, and a lunch, and the other two are what we call their flex time. So what are they doing? It's our tier-two, we have tier-one and we have tier-two targets, small group interventions. Again, we're supporting RTI with this. And we have, to start the year off, what we have is all students are assigned an academic study hall. An academic study hall differs from a traditional study hall in that students are assigned, they're monitored by a team of teachers. So we ideally have one STEM teacher and one humanities teacher. On day one, you know, you might have the STEM teacher in there, on day two, you're going to have the humanities teacher. So the, the students that are assigned to that are getting both every other day. And what, what you have is they're monitoring the work taking place, they're doing things like checking their grades on Power Schools. A lot of the early intervention piece is simply missing assignments. So, you know, we want to deviate from, you know, a, a gap, a learning gap, and, and we need work on skills versus students' grades to have to get to work completion. Those are two entirely different things. So the, the first layer of flex time is tackling the work completion. Get those assignments in. There's time to meet with teachers during their office hours, get extra help, make up tests and quizzes, all during the school day, structured time. It's not before school or after school, it's during this every day during this time. And we have mentor relationship building, obviously, as well. Students can, eventually they're going to meet with clubs during this time, if they're in the great academic standing, and we have advisory every Friday during this time, so for one of those twenty-five minute flex. So that's the first piece of academic study. And there you see the office hours with additional help. The learning lab piece is what we're probably most excited about. This is really a skill-based intervention. There's four labs currently being offered at the high school, so we've expanded from two to four. So we have a literacy lab, a math lab, a science lab, and now an executive functioning lab. In the past, we, we could only fit about forty students a year in the math and literacy lab, and it was only random if the teacher had it at the same time as the student had a study hall. So that was the only time that we could match it. Now with flex time, there's no classes scheduled during flex. So we can put any student at any time into one of these focused tier-two interventions. What we have is targeted support, reteaching an essential skill for academic growth and frequent progress monitor. You might have a high achieving student that could really benefit from, from being in that lab because there might be one skill that we identified a rubric to work towards. So there's, there's, these are in place now, and we're going, again, we're going to be able to every turn roll over and put new students into these and reach much more of our population. So we're talking about closing some of these learning gaps, identifying some of the learning loss and tackling it. This is where we're going to be doing that.
What is executive function?
Um, well.
Organization, how well.
Yeah.
All right.
The special ed staff work really hard with that pair together.
Yeah, I like that.
This is what a standard student schedule might look like, just so you see, flex is and lunch is completely separated out from the four academic classes now. So you might see they have lunch, they have their academic study, but on, on day two, they might have to be assigned to their science lab. And those labs are run just like they used to do, about eight to ten weeks. We do frequent progress monitoring. If they made the desired progress, they're back out and they go into their academic study hall. And we look to get more students enrolled into labs.
Mr. Watz, each class is eighty-three minutes?
Seventy minutes.
Seventy, and flex was used to offset. So we're still running an A B block?
Yep.
And then that time is for specific help.
So in some, you know, what are the goals of flex time? If we can summarize it, promoting academic growth, giving students real ownership of their learning. They need extra help, they're going to seek it out, they know who to seek it out to and where and how. Identify and close those learning gaps, which is more crucial now than ever. Provide targeted, specific support, stand top of their assignments, make them miss work and get extra help. Better utilize the time during the school day for the support and then build upon a culture of continuous improvement that we have at the high school, and we're always looking for that next level, and that next level meaningful work. So thank you guys for your support, and again, October third. So I'll, I'll work with Mr. Schoenmaker on who's, who the invites, to see where, if you want to mark that down in calendars or pencil, I mean, that'll be wonderful.
Oh, dear. I'll give my time.
So I'm going to send you all an email, and then you all can respond back to me, and I'll get it to Mr. Watz. They're not going that way.
You know the two of us are doing that, so it's just.
So that means you're not going to respond to my email?
No.
Oh, I'm sure I'll be talking, so we will be.
And again, I just want to say again, I mean, we kind of collaborated from our entire building, we take, I said part of this, but Megan and Meg have done this and has put us in such a great place. And again, when you go to other schools and see what they're doing, I mean, I'm biased, but I just think we're doing some really good work.
Well, I'm biased, I think Ms. Redman is fantastic. I have never had you for one of my children, Miss Redman, but Ms. Redman is a lifesaver.
How's your mom doing? How's your dad doing?
He's doing good.
Yeah.
Another example of the beauty of living in a small town where you know your teachers, the teachers know your children.
Oh, yeah, she was a lifesaver.
There's so much to be said for that. When we talk about a personalized education, what our children get for opportunities and for some of the things that we mentioned with the two young ladies that were sitting here tonight speaks volumes. So great job, high school. We look forward to that process, and I know we'll do extremely well. Okay, Rusty Malik is going to go through the renovation project.
We're done now.
Just kidding. Town manager pending requests. I don't have anything right now. We continue with our Zoom calls at eight o'clock for the emergency management team in the morning with everything going on with COVID, and I keep you apprised of anything new and coming up. We will be attending the council meeting next Tuesday. Ms. Alberti, Ms. Vaughn and I will.
Is Ms. Alberti here?
She is, she's in the back row.
Welcome.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
We're not going to have her come up again and do the walk.
No, we're not going to.
We're going to keep her in the back, kidding. But so we're going to go for the excess cost grant for special education being returned to the Board of Education. So we will be there on Tuesday evening. So that's the update for, for the town manager. And committee reports, as you know, I don't think we need to go into executive session this evening, we've been working with the.
No, no.
Okay, I've got that queue. We've been working with the administrative union right now. I want to thank Sean and Marcy for being such active members in all, you know, all of the bargaining unions and obviously Jeff as well, and we're getting real close. The administrative one is the, the last one to do before we then go into the teachers' group, so.
Is that next year?
That's another year.
Next year.
So we're making great headway.
Okay.
Enjoy the.
Next year at this time.
Yeah, so I'm going to turn it over to your reports. But, I mean, we did budget operations.
Curriculum, we're holding on, right?
Yeah, we'll do it the next.
I just would like to thank my coaches for attending this evening and giving them that plug for that next month.
Thank you very much for coming and having us.
And I would like them to introduce themselves, because we have additional members in the coaching team. So even those existing members, can you introduce yourself?
Please say what you are coaching specifically.
Yes, yes. So I'm Jessica Cavalero. I'm the math coach and curriculum coordinator for grades six through nine.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Stensky. I am the math coach for K-5.
Hi, I'm Heather Glenn. I'm the K-5 literacy coach.
And I'm Heather Porto. I'm the SBI, R2BI coordinator.
It's Vaughn, left.
Hello, Passino Plod, who gets her child, but she is our R69 coach as well as ELA coordinator. I'm so grateful to this team for all that they do. They are here more in the summer than some of our other people that I see here in the summer, and I appreciate their efforts. They are amazing and never seem to tire and are always here and helping everyone. So a lot of the work that we expect to do as we move forward is directly related to their efforts. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And thank you to the board for supporting the coaching model.
Tracy said you needed it.
It's important that you hear that.
There's certain things you'll realize are in my wheelhouse, and other things you'll completely know. I'm like, I really don't know about that.
I'm buying, because Tracy's going to do it, so we should do it.
Like, you know, she brought, you know, I have Beth over here who gives me the nudge yes or the nudge no, so it's good. We got a good team going on here. Okay, so pension. Was there a meeting this month for pension, and who's on the quarterly?
No, it's partly.
Can I perfect?
Yeah.
Policy, meeting?
No meeting. We are going to reconvene. We're talking about the dust settling and continuing on with pension. It will probably be revoked soon with the crew, and we'll get that actively going again.
ACES?
So we did have a meeting, and I did forget my notes again on my kitchen table, but I can say just generally what we discussed. We discussed the direction that Director's going to take ACES in the following year. We talked about the ribbon cutting. ACES of Chase opened and had a great ribbon cutting. We talked about in detail our ESRS grant that ACES got, and we always have the COVID update. And if I have any other pertinent information, I'll just bring it to the next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. Building committee, Jeff, I knew we had a whole presentation, but did we?
We got a lot of building to base today.
We got that? We got that?
Things happen.
And I heard you had a Monday night off.
Well, we got a Monday night off, but then we filled in on the Wednesday. Put another one on Thursday. We don't get a lot of time off in building committees.
We've only just begun. Wait till the steel starts going up. You're going to love that committee.
We're going to have to replace Jeff. Next month is his last meeting.
Oh, is Jeff going on the town council? I didn't know that.
We'll cross that bridge when we come to it. We got a.
I'm not going to announce until your last meeting.
Uh, good enough.
And then I'll.
No, next month will be last meeting.
Thank you.
I'll give no warnings to the person taking on that committee. It's interesting, but it's great.
No communications meeting. We do not have executive session. Visitors impressed. We have the same visitors as we did before, but someone might have something to say now. Nope. Go to the board.
My dad.
Your piece?
I would just, again, start off the new year, presentation given for SORT. I think this is wonderful. You guys are doing a great job. Very proud of you, and I just want to extend that. I speak for the rest of the board, I believe. Really proud of what you guys put together. This is my alma mater, so I care deeply about it. It's impressive.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's no place like our school system. As I say, I always have a dog in the fight, right? My kids graduated last year, and I have another one in the high school, so the school is very important. That, Trevor would say, role birds.
They got our new logo too, right? That thing looks like a dragon, not a thunderbird.
That's clearly a thunderbird. Oh, my gosh. All right. So the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 21st. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
You can choose.
She's never been jumped at.
Thank you, everyone.